Hi, whoever you are.
I'm here.
She's gonna be here.
Does Jessica be here? There she is.
Everybody keep asking.
Oh, I texted Callie. I thought Callie was gonna be here.
Oh, I was here two o'clock.
All right, now we got three o'clock. We're ready to go. We're up and running. All right, time for the glasses. I call this meeting to order, the Palatan Planning Commission. Item two on our agenda is, let's move right into it, is the adoption of the current agenda as printed, amended, or do we have any other requests to change our agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda, Mr. President.
Have a motion to accept the agenda as printed. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Call those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we're gonna move on to item three, and I'm gonna turn it over to Ligon to make the introduction.
Yes, so the first thing on the agenda is the Housing City Group that last year worked probably for eight or nine months on this, had a really nice survey. So Susan Wanniski is in, Rudy are gonna give us a kind of a presentation of the results of that survey, some other things that the group worked on sort of parallel while the Citizens Working Group is working on some comp plan things as well. So I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come. We're gonna keep it short and sweet, I promise. I'm here today with Deputy Sheriff Rudy Gregory, who also served on the committee along with 20 other residents, as well as nonprofit representatives and county staff. I promise, we are, wanna keep it short and comprehensible, no layered zoning maps, no charts, no graphs today, so let's see if we can do it that way. The 20-member committee on housing affordability, as well as the Citizens Working Group, as Ligon said, studied the topic, assessed for about nine months, each of us considering the balance of the rural aesthetic, as well as with housing development. We used the county strategic planning goals as a guide. We also used a local survey, survey comments then informed what we did, and we also studied what is being done not only here in Virginia in rural areas, but around the country. Palatan needs more housing choices, and there's, there are very innovative ways that county government can get involved. First slide, meet Alice. She represents nearly 30% of about 1,100 households here in Palatan who are working but make below the household's survival monthly budget, housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, phone plan, et cetera. For a single parent of one in daycare, that budget is, what's needed is $63,372, which is about 60% of the area median income, which is $110,000. So just wanted you to meet Alice again. For those of you who don't know, ALICE stands for Asset Limited, Income Constricted, and Employed, thus ALICE. And again, these are households where maybe one major roof repair fix or a car repair just really turned the budget into a tailspin for them. So anyway, next slide, meet Mary. No acronyms here, just Mary. Mary represents the fastest-growing part of our county's population in the past 15 years, those are who are 55 and over. By 2030, six, those 65 and over will reach nearly 30%. Mary either wants to age in place or find something smaller to move into that she can afford. Many of our Marys live in 45% of the county's older, smaller housing stock, which was probably built before 1990. Many of the Marys are faced with critical home repairs because their homes are older. And I also want you to meet in the next slide, some of our county residents surveyed. We had 899 county residents turn in surveys this past spring. 73% felt workers in the county should be able to find housing here and afford it, and over 60% of the respondents felt those making below $80,000 did not have enough options. And I'm gonna turn it over to Rudy to share with some of those residents.
So these are from some of the residents here in Palatan. This resident lives in District Four. Currently rents a house in Palatan and can't afford to rent the house on their own, so they have a roommate. Been living in the same rental for five years, and the rent just increased to $1850 a month for a small 980 square foot home. They've been looking for a lower-priced rental for over a year, but haven't been able to find anything in Palatan that's reasonable or affordable. Would like to buy a house in Palatan, but with their current salary, the price range is $215,000 to $250,000. This person would like to see more rental houses, townhomes, condos, apartments, or other options in Palatan that are more affordable than what's on the current market. Another one was a teacher who lives in District Three. Teacher lives in District Three here in Palatan and has a school, a child in the school system. If they were a single parent, they would not be able to afford a house here in Palatan. And if they were to buy the house they currently live in today, or instead of 15 years ago, they wouldn't be able to afford it at all. This, this person said maybe the county could start a teacher, next-door program, or start a program for first responders. These types of programs allow for civil servants of the county to actually live in the county they survey in. The more you can get these people to live in their own communities, the more of a community it will be.
Next slide. So local initiatives, be it through the comp plan, the zoning changes, through land donations, support, and partnerships, our committee really thought local government can indeed help move the needle here. And it's not necessarily solely federal policy and all about interest rates. So going into some of the things that the committee recommended, this one's sort of an omnibus one, where we're looking at Loudon County. They have an excellent webpage where everything about housing, whether it's eviction and foreclosure information, whether it's bill pay, whether it's critical care, where you can get affordable mortgages, is all located on one page, so it's easy for people to find whatever their housing need may be. Loudon also has a housing liaison appointed within staff, from their existing staff, that works with a standing housing committee to work on the goal, whatever the goal has been set, over the next several years by the county. And it just keeps people engaged and, and looking at what that goal is and how close we're getting to it. And so anyway, we just really like their model and what they're doing online.
Did you speak to them and thought how affected that person was?
Did not, did not talk about the liaison position per se, but we can certainly do that. Going next to rental, rental housing ideas, and rental is needed in the county, but we're not thinking about multi-story apartment buildings, we're thinking of intentional creation of new, small-scale, affordable rental housing, let's say for seniors, 16 to 20 units, or maybe adaptive reuse somewhere else within the county in an existing building. We're gonna look to nearby Louisa and Fluvana. They have a housing foundation there. They are currently working on a small-scale development, 16 one-bedroom rentals, basically are putting together eight one-story duplexes, which are modular, for seniors, and those seniors can make no more than 60% of the area median income. And they're also adding to this neighborhood nine two-bedroom apartments for county workers who are under 80% of AMI.
Where did they get the funding for that? Is that from the Virginia Housing?
So they got money from, the land was actually donated by the county.
I read that.
Seven acres. They're getting money through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Because they are a nonprofit, they're, they're tapping into something called home funds and ASNH funds. They're getting donations to get the project done as well. One thing that they're not tapping into, but I am gonna mention, low-income housing tax credits. And of all programs in the, that are being offered by the federal government, this needs a rebranding and what this thing is called. These are low-income tax credits that go to the developer to help make their project viable. It's either for a developer, a nonprofit, to use, that they can then sell these credits and put, get more equity then into their project. We as Habitat can even apply for them as well. And what this means is that the, the project creator must guarantee that up to 40% of the units in that development, that community, must go to those who are 60% or under AMI. So I'm going back to that number. These are people who are making $50,000, $60,000, who may be working for the county. And the rest of the units can be market rate, or they can all be for those who are at 60 and under, or 80 and under, as long as it averages out that you're doing 40 to those who are 60 and under. Anyway, I just wanna bring this up because I had a, I had a discussion with one of our board members, and he brought up the apartment complex that caused a lot of dissension in the county a number of years ago, and low-income tax credits were being used for that. And I know there were a lot of other issues involved, but he was under the perception that that meant that all those apartments had to be rented out to those who are making, you know, on the very lowest end of the income scale. And he did not realize this was actually for the developer or the project creator to help get it done, so that they can make it affordable. So thanks for listening to that. That's something that should be renamed. Here's another idea in our report, not NIMBY, but Yidby, Yes in God's Backyard. This is a movement that is becoming very popular at the state general assembly level, as well as at the federal level, actually bipartisan support, to give churches and groups affiliated with churches flexibility on using their property for low-density, affordable housing. And it's something, a lot of churches do have property, and what we're recommending or suggesting is that maybe this is looked at, or can be looked at, again, caps put on it, you know, maybe it's two units on their property, maybe up to four at most, but what could be done with church properties? And this does not mean that res, I mean congregates must, must go and live in those houses, this would just offer more housing stock overall to the, to the county. This picture you're seeing here is a unit, two units that were done on United Methodist property in Idaho. But again, the movement is coming, and there's a lot of talk about it at G, the General Assembly, and then now on the federal, on the congressional level too. Going into homeownership, we're covering a couple areas here. The first are those folks who already own their home and who are aging in their home. And I'm gonna turn it over to Rudy on this one, because you work with a lot of that population yourself.
So as referenced earlier, the county population and housing stock is, is aging. Susan with Habitat does a good bulk of the critical home repairs and critical home modifications, but there's so much more we can do with the population out here. 81%, of those who we worked with last year made less than $30,000 a year. So you can see with one major issue, they need a roof that's just unaffordable. And we run into that all the time to where change of the season, the, the heat pump goes out, then they're relying on space heaters or baseboard heaters, which runs the electric buildup. So it just becomes an ongoing issue that a lot of times we run into it from the sheriff's office because of calls for service of relating to something else, a medical emergency or something else, and then we kinda see what's going on and we reach out to other partners and the agencies. We had an example, a house that was built in 1972, it placed two rotted windows, a hot water tank, the line between the septic tank and the house and steps over a five-year period, and the owners are in their 80s. I know when I'm in my 80s, I don't want to have those kind of expenses, and I hope, hopefully that there's things out there that'll help me, and organizations out there that 'll help me.
We also work with a lot of clients who are in very, very old 1970s, single-wide trailers, where basically most of the money that they are getting is going out their windows because they're not insulated properly and they're like sifts. There are programs that we would like the county to look at and perhaps investigate that actually would help with some replacement for these residents of their current homes.
Is there a organization within the county that tracks all of this and knows like who needs what the most first? You know what I mean? Like the 80-year-old person that needs the windows? Is there, is that social services, or how do, how does all this, 'cause I know with the Lions Club now, we're doing the occasional ramp.
Ramp?
You know, is there, it seemed like we need something to pull all this together. Does that exist?
Well, I mean, we all through the network of social service providers refer to one another.
Okay.
And again, you know, we, we know where a lot of these clients live, we get referrals. Sometimes we do, you know, again, the amount of ramps that are needed, and I know that, thank goodness, the Lions Club took on some of this too, because it's an overwhelming need.
There's that organization in Richmond, I can't remember the name of it, and that's all they do, is build ramps, for example. They don't charge, and I think they've done like 700 in the last three years, so my numbers might be off, but.
It might be Project Homes or Rebuilding Richmond, but they're, they're unfortunately not working here in Palatan, so.
And I'll say, we, you know, Palatan is still a, a smaller community, and it's a great community to be a part of. So as far as the official channel, there's not an official channel, but unofficial channel, we work together probably several times a day with text messages and phone calls, hey, do you know these people? Can we get some help over there? Can we get, you know, it's a lot of times where we have to beg, borrow from different companies and different contractors that will give us a very good rate to get these emergency repairs. And a lot of times our, our population doesn't know they're gonna have a problem until, like now, the weather's changing.
Right.
So they didn't know it was a drafty window or their heat pump wasn't working, so now we're, we're kinda going through that season. But yeah, we work together a lot, all, all of us. Thank you.
The next suggestion that we put in the plan, and it's actually happened, so we can check, check one off, was the increase in income for seniors who can apply for tax relief. So that one I can move on from, quick slide. So was glad to see that happen.
She's picking up a real estate tax relief?
Yes, I'm sorry, real estate tax relief, yes. Thank you for making that clarification. This slide is about neighborhoods and a desire that we have that the county would support in mind, body, spirit, the development of a neighborhood for county and county school employees. Again, a development of clustered homes, whether it be in a growth area or in a conservation subdivision, and partner with a nonprofit developer, a land trust, even a private developer to get that done. There are several examples around the country, even around Virginia, where this has worked and improved beneficial for county workers and essential workers, as well as school folks. And as far as zoning and land use, we're gonna keep it quick here. We watched and attended the Citizens Working Group meetings and read their report, and we do, in this picture, support their recommendation to develop cluster housing in the village growth area, in the eastern growth area, and the economic opportunity districts. Again, combination of smaller lot sizes, community, zero lot lines where appropriate. And finally, unfortunately, we don't have this exact streetscape, but this is from Farmville. We'd love to see, committed in the county, multiple housing units allowed over commercial spaces. Right now, commercial zoning as commerce center only specifies for one live-work, no matter how large the retail space underneath is. And we're wondering what could we do here to actually have some housing attached to retail spaces throughout the county that's a little bit more flexible than, than what's currently in the zoning?
In Campbell County, where I work now, I work now as a town manager, we actually changed our code about six months ago, but now that apartments above businesses has been, like, it's only affected like about 15 buildings, but that's took off like wildfire. So people come, you know, park behind and come up, they don't have an access to the business below, but the apartments above, and it's really been very successful. So that's something we need to look at.
And, you know, this is sort of a pie-in-the-sky idea, but we will be building a new resort. And, you know, could, could there be some really cool development done where maybe there is two or four apartments attached or above it? And again, with building codes and fire codes and all of that, but again, it's such a populous area where we are right now, it would be a great place for people to live perhaps too. But again, it's just an idea, and I think it's worth exploring. So we've come to the end, and I, I said it would be short and sweet. We're really hoping, we believe that local is the key piece to providing more of these options for residents. And I know you guys have a lot of work ahead, and again, we've put in a lot of work with our suggestions, and please, if there are any other questions later, we'd love to take them or research and get back to you.
I've got a question now. Who, who were the surveys sent to?
So the survey was done for a period of two months, online surveying was put out through a number of social media channels, through the county. We did a tremendous amount of on-the-street work, setting up at the library, senior groups. We have the results, and it's a very, very good reflection of the county as far as demographics and as far as balance within districts too. Those results, we have broken down by district, so if you are interested in your district results, or even all of them for that matter, we have the results, and then all the comments that were written at the very back of each survey as well, that we can provide.
I never got a survey or saw a survey anywhere, nobody. I never got a survey or saw a survey, so I just wonder if it was kinda targeting to younger people or, or whatnot, because people like me that have big land and stuff to, to be able to talk about this were not notified or asked for a survey.
We, Garland, we had things on social media, we had things put out through the county. I mean, I, I truly feel it was widespread, and, you know, we, we truly worked, we got 900 people to do it. And there are plenty of people who talked about preserving their rural space and land, so I do feel it was a good representation of the county.
Also, a couple things. Loudon County is kinda like way up northern Virginia. I like the fact that you used Louisa and Fluvana. Instead, I'd rather see the more rural counties use their ideas than Loudon County, places like that that are heavily populated.
Loudon is what I, we liked about their, it was the website that they had and how they had their information presented, so when a resident went on their website, it was really clear to say, hey, I'm interested in some housing help, it's all collected in one space. You could say, hey, I want, I need some help with repairs, click on this, go to the repairs. It was more about that than necessarily their housing policy. For example, New Kent County has a housing committee, as well as a housing liaison, and so, so they have something similar. I go back to Loudon, it was more about their website design than the size of the county.
I like the fact too, that when you're like going along with the, the small homes and small lots, that you're, you're stressing the fact that it needs to be for Palatan employees. That's important, in my opinion, because you're gonna get, you start building those types of houses, you're gonna have everybody from Chesterfield, I wanna go move to Palatan, and they're gonna take something where, you know, these people you know would, would be able to get. So it's got to be some kind of verbiage or some kind of rule or something, like you said, that's a 60% income and all of that from Palatan, all the people that get to Louisa's house.
And that is possible, and that is being done all over the country. Preference is given. Habitat only works with people who either live in Palatan or have worked here for at least a year. So that can be stipulated when doing some of these, you know, essential worker-type programs. And again, Louisa Fluvana is a bit ahead of the game on this, and I think what they're doing and the partnerships they have and their funding sources, it's a really good model.
Any other questions?
Is the one in Louisa there in Mineral itself, the little town there, if you're going 522 in Mineral on the right-hand side?
Yes, I saw that.
There's like six houses.
Yes.
That way people could see.
Oh, I apologize.
I saw that, I was doing there not too long ago.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think it is. I have to look at the robe. I'll get back to you, Mr. Hall, to confirm, but.
Almost positive. Have to be based on the size of the houses and how close they are.
They have.
I don't think they're duplexes, though. She was saying they were duplexes.
They look like, they have four under roof right now, with more coming.
Right.
Then it's not, there's more than four.
Yeah.
They're getting ready to build the last two.
And I think these are all single, they're not duplexes, I don't believe, but they're small, they're small.
It's another model to look, I don't think it is the one, it's right in the town of Mineral, I know exactly who you're talking about.
Right.
They're double stacked, so it's like a house in front of a house, and they like have a driveway that goes in for both, and they all look the exact same, and they're, but.
I'll ask, I'll ask him from Louisa Fluvana Housing Foundation about that.
D H I T C, is that the one with housing tax credit one?
So the one that, the, the one that I presented with 25 homes, they're not using Y-Tech for their development, and I don't know why, and I have another call in to her about why they decided not to. Can, I, you know, they, they probably have some reason, but I'd like to find out more.
I've been involved with a couple of those projects. Last one was in La Raze, 55 units. It was all, all of them for, you know, low.
Glad to see that happen.
She's picking up a real estate tax relief?
Yes, I'm sorry, real estate tax relief. Yes, thank you for making that clarification. This slide is about neighborhoods and a desire that we have that the county would support in mind, body, spirit, the development of a neighborhood for county and county school employees. Again, a development of clustered homes, whether it be in a growth area or in a conservation subdivision, and partner with a nonprofit developer, a land trust, even a private developer to get that done. There are several examples around the country, even around Virginia, where this has worked and improved beneficial for county workers and essential workers as well as school folks. And as far as zoning and land use, we're going to keep it quick here. We watched and attended the citizens' working group meetings and read their report, and we do, in this picture, support their recommendation to develop cluster housing in the village growth area, in the eastern growth area, and the economic opportunity districts. Again, combination of smaller lot sizes, community, zero lot lines where appropriate. And finally, unfortunately, we don't have this exact streetscape, but this is from Farmville. We'd love to see committed in the county multiple housing units allowed over commercial spaces. Right now, commercial zoning as commerce center only specifies for one live-work, no matter how large the retail space underneath is. And we're wondering what could we do here to actually have some housing attached to retail spaces throughout the county that's a little bit more flexible than what's currently in the zoning?
In Campbell County, where I work now, at Brookdale, as a town manager, we actually changed our code about six months ago. But now that apartments above businesses has been like, it was only affected like about 15 buildings, but that's took off like wildfire. So people come, park behind and come up, they don't have an access to the business below, but the apartments above, and it's really been very successful. So it's something we need to look at.
And, you know, this is sort of a pie in the sky idea, but we will be building a new resort. And, you know, could there be some really cool development done where maybe there is two or four apartments attached or above it? And again, with building codes and fire codes and all of that, but again, it's such a populous area where we are right now, it would be a great place for people to live perhaps, too. But again, it's just an idea, and I think it's worth exploring. So we've come to the end, and I said it would be short and sweet. We're really hoping, we believe that local is the key piece to providing more of these options for residents. And I know you guys have a lot of work ahead, and again, we've put in a lot of work with our suggestions, and please, if there are any other questions later, we'd love to take them or research and get back to you.
I've got a question now. Who were the surveys sent to?
So the surveying was done for a period of two months. Online surveying was put out through a number of social media channels through the county. We did a tremendous amount of on-the-street work, setting up at the library, senior groups. We have the results, and it's a very, very good reflection of the county as far as demographics and as far as balance within districts, too. Those results, we have broken down by district. So if you are interested in your district results, or even all of them for that matter, we have the results, and then all the comments that were written at the very back of each survey as well that we can provide.
I never got a survey or saw a survey anywhere, nobody I noticed got a survey or saw a survey. So I just wonder if it is kind of targeting to younger people or whatnot, because people like me that have big land and stuff to be able to talk about this were not notified or asked for a survey?
We had things on social media, we had things put out through the county. I mean, I truly feel it was widespread, and, you know, we truly worked, we got 900 people to do it. And there are plenty of people who talked about preserving their rural space and land. So I do feel it was a good representation of the county.
Also, a couple of things. Loudoun County is kind of like way up northern Virginia. I like the fact that you used Louisa and Fluvana. Instead, I'd rather see the more rural counties use their ideas than Loudoun County, places like that that are heavily populated.
Loudoun is what I, we liked about there, it was the website that they had and how they had their information presented. So when a resident went on their website, it was really clear to say, hey, I'm interested in some housing help. It's all collected in one space. You could say, hey, I want, I need some help with repairs. Click on this, go to the repairs. It was more about that than necessarily their housing policy. For example, New Kent County has a housing committee as well as a housing liaison. And so they have something similar. I go back to Loudoun, it was more about their website design than the size of the county.
I like the fact, too, that when you're like going along with the small homes and smaller lots, that you're stressing the fact that it needs to be for Palatane employees. That's important, in my opinion, because you're going to get, you start building those types of houses, you want to have everybody from Chesterfield, I want to go move to Palatane, and they're going to take something where, you know, these people you know would be able to get. So it's got to be some kind of verbiage or some kind of rule or something, like you said, it's a 60% income and all of that from Palatane, all the people that get to live these houses.
And that is possible, and that is being done all over the country. Preference is given. Habitat only works with people who either live in Palatane or have worked here for at least a year. So that can be stipulated when doing some of these, you know, essential worker-type programs. And again, Louisa Fluvana is a bit ahead of the game on this, and I think what they're doing and the partnerships they have and their funding sources, it's a really good model.
Any other questions?
Is the one in Louisa there in Mineral itself, the little town there, if you're going 522 in Mineral on the right-hand side?
Yes, I saw that.
There's like six houses.
I'm sorry.
That way people could see.
Oh, I apologize.
I saw that, I was there not too long ago.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think it is. I have to look at the robe. I'll get back to you, Mr. Hall, to confirm, but...
Almost positive. Have to be based on the size of the houses and how close they are.
They have...
I don't think they're duplexes, though. She was saying they were duplexes.
They look like, they have four under roof right now with more coming.
Coming, yeah.
Then it's not, there's more than four.
Yeah.
They're getting ready to build the last two.
And I think these are all single, they're not duplexes, I don't believe, but they're small.
They're small. It's another model to look, I don't think it is the one, it's right in the town of Mineral, I know exactly who you're talking about. They're double stacked, so it's like a house in front of a house, and they like have a driveway that goes in for both, and they all look the exact same. And they're, but...
I'll ask, I'll ask Kim from Louisa Fluvana Housing Foundation about that.
D H I T C, the lower income housing tax credit one?
So the one that, the one that I presented with 25 homes, they're not using Y-Tech for their development, and I don't know why, and I have another call-in to her about why they decided not to. Ken, I, you know, they probably have some reason, but I'd like to find out more.
I've been involved with a couple of those projects. The last one was in La Rais, 55 units. It was all, all of them for lower income. And there's a lot of developers, that's all they do. And it's been around since 86, 1986 tax reform. And that's a private, you know, private-public partnership, and, you know, what it really has done is the private sector uses these credits to build a lot of, I mean, there are billions since 86. My experience with them is a lot of times it's older retirees and younger, younger folks. The one in La Rais that I was involved in, I think, has been very successful. It's fairly new, so, you know, maybe the name doesn't sound great, but I think there are units out there that you might never know. You just, they were, you know, financed through that tax credit. I think it's a 30-year term they have.
I think 15 years on some of them. They have to be 15 years for at least for rental at that rate, something like that. I need to get more information, but thank you for adding that. Thank you for listening.
Okay, I would just say, not criticizing anybody, that's the way things happen. State of Virginia has a code section, a comprehensive plan, and what it's supposed to encompass is July, after July 2021, that all counties in their comprehensive plan, they will have a designated manufactured home location as part of that development plan. And I don't know how long this has been in there, but every county is supposed to have a designated urban development area that's about concentrated housing. And so the thing about the comprehensive plan, if you don't go by it's nothing criminal about it, as opposed to criminal statutes and so forth. So if we would take as a framework on going through the comprehensive plan and try to, because the state knows all these issues, it hasn't been about affordable housing, and different income levels or different stages in life, if all those things were addressed in a comprehensive plan and developed, a lot of this would be alleviated. But since it's not, consequently, you end up with a majority of, not just in Palatane, whatever their locality is, wants to have. But so what's supposed to happen in Palatane is designated by the State of Virginia Code in that chapter. But then something else happens. So I would like to, and I've spoken a good number of times about that being the framework, you know, as we go through the updated comprehensive plan, that that be the framework that we try to follow and implement. And then a lot of the thing about housing would take place, you know, if you had a designated urban area.
And you said for manufactured houses, would that be like single wides and whatnot?
Whatever type, manufacturing, most time manufactured housing is considered double wides, but...
But Palatane allows single wide, now the walls are not minimum of whatnot, 100 and 20 square feet? Because it used to be, have to be agricultural workers that could only have single wides, but there's a new square footage minimum, I thought, that you could put one on your property and not be affiliated with being farm work, but it had to be a minimum of 900 or 920 square feet.
Ken, I did not know about this designated space for manufactured homes.
That's exciting.
Which is interesting, and, you know, again, and you all know, because you're planning commissioners, the difference between manufactured homes versus modular homes, which are more like stick-built. So I'm curious about this, and needs one more.
Which is the one that's harder to get a loan for, those two items?
The made-in fact. Modular homes now, modular homes now, you have appraisers go in and they don't know, they don't know the difference.
I think it's the mobile homes, it's like something with this, there's, if the mobile home's too old, they, a mortgage won't put a loan on it.
That's true.
Right. But I don't know the date, is it 70 something?
76, something like that, they will not do it yet. And trying to keep insurance on those that are out there now is also a bit difficult as well.
It's amazing how many, I think most of the manufactured homes are usually 20-year lifespan, you know, which depreciated out to kind of zero. It's amazing how many are out there that are 40 years plus.
And these, these, the guys that go out in the valley and fix them up, turn around and sell them for these unreal prices. So they just go in and fix the rotting floors and everywhere and make them like new, and you're selling for crazy money, so...
And just to address, and I guess we all listen to the news about housing, but so much of other everyday costs, whether it's food and medical and many other things, have gone up so much that it's eaten into the funds that people have to, to put, you know, toward a house. And Palatane today, in and of, it was a couple of weeks ago, about a couple of Palatane, they were only making about $100,000, and they said they couldn't afford childcare and what it took to operate.
I think that was in the story about Alice, I think Alice something.
But this was unbelievable, they're making $100,000. And so I'm just saying, the housing thing is exacerbated by the other income that had been eaten up because of other things that have gone up, you know, very, very rapidly.
That is true, but I also think local government can come up with a few innovative partnerships to take a little bite out of it. Not going to solve everything, but I think there are things that we can all work on together to give the opportunity to a few more people to own a house here or rent a house here, so...
And what you said struck a chord with me, you know, elderly and people that, you know, have older homes that need to be fixed up, I mean, that's a whole different angle that needs to be addressed. Like you said, I don't want to be 90 years old, and, you know, we just need to be forward-thinking and come up with innovative solutions to help that piece of the pie, too.
I mean, and the other piece with elderly's, having the, like, you're talking about the elderly that are still living in their home, that's, you know, an aged home, but if you have the Scottsvilles of the world, which are the maintenance-free, they don't have to cut the grass, they don't have to do anything, you know, if you have those type communities that are the 55s and ups, then they could move out of their house and into a place that they didn't have to worry about the upkeep.
Freeing up housing maybe for a first-time home buyer.
Right. And for me, I see our county, we have two gaps. We have Scottsville pretty much as the only place for an aging community, but then we don't really have anything for our high school grads when they come back from college, first-time home buyers, maybe they didn't go to college, maybe they're graduating high school, they have to leave mom and dad's house, you know, those younger generations, pre-kids, pre-marriage, early on, but, you know, they are another group that might not want maintenance and upkeep because they're the younger generation.
And they're lazy.
I was trying not to say that, I was just, you know.
That's the truth. I've got grandsons the same way, I can tell you.
Different priorities.
There you go, there you go. But, you know, there are different sectors that gravitate to these no-maintenance communities, whether it's a townhouse, whether it's a smaller modular home, whether it's just a one or two-bedroom. They don't need much space, they don't need, you know, to take care of much, because they don't need much, so...
Please do. So it used to be in Palatane that young people get a start, and a lot of them got a start in Holly Hills. And I wouldn't call that high-density housing, but we won't allow high-density housing in Palatane anymore. And certainly, it came about, you know, a lot of lots didn't perk, and a good number of them in there that couldn't, but that's solved by water and sewer, you know, for higher-density housing.
And very expensive alternative systems.
And so I'm just saying, people, it used to be that people had affordable houses and started out young. And I know plenty of my friends, you know, got married right out of high school, they got a place in Holly Hills, you know, they drew their income and then they live in a real nice place. So that was a methodology, it used to be a number of duplexes over Palatane, a lot of it, none do built now. That's one out in my neighborhood, it's been that since I was a kid, we called it the double house, but it turned out it was a duplex, you know. So those things that have been around, that accomplished those goals, they've just been blocked, you might say, taking place. If we could return to the reality of starting out life, if people need a small house and they need a condominium or apartment or something to live in, I think we'd solve that problem.
I want you to be really forward-thinking also, because like, what was it, Penrico got $60 million for housing?
From their data center.
Yeah, so we, I don't know if we missed a boat or something, or was not informed or whatever, but I think there's still an opportunity there. Down the road, there'd be a lot of opportunity, but we've got to be digging in and trying to figure out some of this stuff out, and looking at best practices like you've done in other municipalities and counties and stuff like that, bringing that forward. There's got to be a better way.
And there's a, there's a lot of lots sitting in Palatane right now. Maybe there should be some kind of work committee put together to go contact owners of these lots, see if they're willing to sell them. Some of them may not even know what they could get for. And like some of the, you said there was somewhere that y'all were looking at lots and the setbacks would allow you to build, and there could be specials, and, you know, we talked about setbacks today, if there could be certain times where you could change the setbacks so some of these lots could be utilized for, because these types of lots are going to be the ones that you build the small homes on.
Right.
So there are a lot of them out here in Palatane.
That's a good idea.
What, like the...
Small lots like Lake Shawnee, Tristes Lake, there were some in Holly Hills.
So, yeah, but the problem with the ones in Holly Hills is they don't perk.
But you got, they didn't perk for alternative?
So it's, I think, and Susan might know this a touch better, the issue with Holly Hills is it was put in before the new health regulations with the reserves. And so now to go to build, you can't put a reserve on it, so they're basically unbuildable because you, like, the wells and septics on all those one-acre lots are all too close that you can't...
And you have to usually join two lots to get enough space.
Yeah.
And the alternative system, you know, we have done it, but we found, we point-blank found a grant to get that done because they're $30,000.
Yes.
So, and then the upkeep, you all know this.
Is that a state code or a county code?
The health department's of reserves, the state code.
State code.
That's my health code.
So that's the problem, is there's just not enough land to get the reserve for the septic or...
Fit the well in.
And the well, because there's 100 foot, but it's not just yours, it's all neighbors. I don't know about Lake Shawnee, I know there's some lots that...
Well, Lake Shawnee, a lot of it's public water, so you don't have to worry about the well.
Yeah.
It's just a drain field.
Yeah, it depends.
They have an alternate system that does that.
But then what's the one out?
Tristes Lake.
Is that, there's some that...
Off 13.
Probably. There's some I know that I've seen, they're like tiny, they're like .13 acres.
Hathaway Lakes.
Hathaway Lakes, that's the one.
That's what I, that's what I...
That's the Hathaway Lakes, that's why.
Those are camper sites, camper sites.
Yes.
They're campers, yeah, the really small lots are just for campers.
They just, they keep going up on market, and then they go off-market, then they come back on-market and...
Yeah, I've been to plenty of tax sales where people, you know, found out they couldn't, and they quit paying the taxes, and somebody bought it.
Yep.
Same person come back, next time for the same...
Now get rid of it.
That's gone on a long time, like, there.
So I would say those are probably not to be added to this.
And you know, the letter-writing pains, you know, where we get the locks and send out 100 letters, and it's rare that you get the response back even, it's a hard road, find those lots.
This one has got to be traveled.
Thank you. We travel it. But I think, I hope, there are a few other things that can be worked on to make this more possible, to make it an experience where more people can turn the key in their door and live here in the county. And I go back to what Berenice said as far as, there are ways to couch these programs for county workers, county residents. Others have gone before and done it.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thanks very much for coming and speaking, and appreciate your time.
All right, well, thank you for allowing us to do it.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that...
We'll get out of here.
I'll have to go to the planning director. All right, so we'll change gears a little bit. I want to kind of review the citizens' working group, mainly the economic development, economic prosperity, whatever you want to call it. There's a little bit of housing that will be discussed in this presentation, but really that's for the next workshop, we're going to focus on housing. And I have all kinds of ideas out of the way to make housing options. I think we have some good ideas of the CWG's recommendations that we'll focus on, but that will be today, but we'll touch on it a little bit here and there. So let me share my screen. Actually logged in this time. The other night I didn't log in, and I was certainly, I gotta keep it, I got it. I've got a few slides, so I'll try to go through these as efficiently as possible. So we're going to look at, like I mentioned, economic prosperity, the growth areas, also sometimes called special study areas, and we'll look at land use framework, how those will develop with the citizens' working group. This is all kind of came about as part of the strategic plan, which the board supervisor, I think it was January, it was February or January that it was adopted, the strategic plan 25 to 28, which was worked on for at least the last half of 2024. And some of you might have participated in some of the interviews and different work sessions they had, is they developed a strategic plan, and one of the, one of the areas that was identified was economic prosperity and getting toward that 85-15 residential-commercial tax base. Right now, I think the county, I think we've estimated that we're somewhere around 93.7, so 93% of the county's tax base is residential as opposed to 7% for the industrial-commercial. So as part of this workshop, we're going to review past, current, potential, future land use maps, see how these goals translate geographically. Well, like I said, residential lands are primary focus today, and just that was a little, quite a bit of overlap that will be discussed today. And also, anytime during this, especially when we get into the maps, if you need to stop or ask questions, just we'll stop, we can look at other maps, things like that. So the economic prosperity priority, again, there are six county-wide priorities in the strategic plan. Economic prosperity is a core priority, and that will directly inform land use planning in the county. So part of the economic prosperity, I think these are goals that pretty much any community probably would aspire to, but we want to strengthen the commercial-industrial tax base, ready-to-build economic development sites, direct growth toward planned, infrastructure-served areas, maintain rural characters outside of those growth areas or special plan areas in modern zoning, zoning and regulatory tools to help this become possible. One of the questions that was asked, I think, well, we had a brief presentation, was just talking about the availability of industrial and commercial land in the county. I just use what they call LoopNet, which is part of, I think CoStar owns that, and I believe it's, you know, the best commercial-industrial, you know, for...
It is the commercial MLS.
Right. Okay, it is the commercial MLS.
Commercial version.
So just what's at least publicly listed, listed in Palatane, are 13 active listings. Saw a range from 170 to 3.2 million. You can see, the village is highlighted in the middle, but you can see that maidens to the county line, in this case Holly Hills, is where a lot of your, which makes sense, that's where a lot of your industrial, commercial properties are located, high-traffic area, there were a couple out, I think Ballsville area. And you can see, this is pretty consistent, Goochland, that had 12 active listings that ranged from 350 to 6, 6 million, 6 and 1/2 million. And Chesterfield, it was in the packet, they had 67 active listings, so proportionally, I think that all sort of matches up. So I don't know, that a lot of, a lot of listings, it seems pretty modest to me, 13, but again, it seems pretty consistent across the board with other communities. Yeah, we'll take a little trip down memory lane, talk about land use planning, looking at, so those special plan areas, here we have, go back to 2010, you can just, I'm trying to show how these plans have evolved. Courthouse Village, you can see 60 around... plans have evolved. Courthouse Village, you can see 60, around 60 Corridor East, 711 Village. First thing that jumps off my sort of, you know, to me is that obviously these, you know, the 60 Corridor East and the Courthouse Village is a larger study area than what we have today, as far as I call it a quote-unquote growth area. And just to give you the land use categories, and we've tweaked these a little bit over the year. Commerce Center used to be a future land use category. That is, that is not the case today. Now we call it gateway commercial, but it still pretty much functions the same. So Commerce Center, we're taking what it was described in 2010, was large master plan business, light industrial, typically 30 to 50 acres, intended for office, like manufacturing, distribution, commercial uses, locate along major corridors, requiring coordinated infrastructure design standards. One thing that was in 2010 as well, that we don't have is low-density residential. That's exactly what it sounds like, single-family homes on larger lots, generally 2 to 5 acres, like a future land use category. And we have Village Residential, which is a, what I would just call a kind of mixed use of more or less. We're looking at gross densities of half-acre to four units per acre residential units. We're thinking about master plan, open space, streets, connectivities, and then Village Center. Village Centers are mixed-use areas, it's either moderate to high intensity commercial, office, civic, residential, a little different from maybe Village in the sense that it's a little more mixed use, maybe they expect more business, commercial activities along with the residential in 2010. And here is that 2010 map, just kind of drill down a little bit more. You can see, you know, I'll focus in on these two courthouses, the East Corridor area. You can see here, quite a bit different map, Village Residential. Here, I mean, you call this, this is already built out, so you know, my question is if it's already sort of built out, is it necessary to put it on the future land use map? But you can see some of this area here, that's Village Residential is already built out, Holly Hills. You can see Commercial Center and Village Center, which is again more of a commercial slash mixed use as I read it. This was 2010, out in the eastern part of the county. Then we come to the, we come to the courthouse. We can see Village Residential extends kind of out past, out on Old Buckingham, and even we have low-density residential, which is, again, already a lot of this is already built out, the low-density residential. Village Center at Academy Road, Village Center along 60, a Commerce Center at Maidens and 60. This dark navy is institutional, so that's going to be schools and county office buildings. And you can see also low-density residential here to the west.
Wouldn't it be public lands? Because that's by the Great Park.
Correct. Public land, the navy blue. And here's Winterfield area. Here we have Village Center and some Village Residential with a lot of, being in the river here, you have a lot of natural conservation areas. Then I'll move on to, we jump forward to 2019. A little bit different, we've scaled back a little bit. Purple is Commerce Center, yellow is going to be their Village Residential, the pinkish is where we introduce economic opportunity to the maps in 2019. And I'll give you some comparisons here. So we can see on the east end of the county, if you look at 2010 versus 2019, we've removed the Village Center, can't say mixed, lack of a better word, mixed-use areas. We've replaced those, it looks like, with Commerce Center. We've introduced the industrial, which was Commerce Center. Again, this is luckstone, so it's really just, that's what the land use is, as opposed to a future land use. We have scaled back the Village Residential, you can see here, taken off. And then here, what we call that low-density residential, they've removed, but this is an existing Village Residential area. They just basically, it's a, this is existing land use, is a low-density residential, but they have removed some of that area. So big picture between 2010, 2019, kind of took out some residential, converted more, more of the land to economic opportunity and some Commerce Center. We go to the Village, you can see the Village here still has the Village Residential, Village Center, but we've converted this Village Center now into Commerce Center here. Commerce now, Commerce Center is now the dominant land use along 60, with again, a large, here's Old Buckingham, you can see this is all still Village Residential here. And then 20, then we go back up to Winterfield, not a lot changed there. 2019 plan calls this economic opportunity, which is, can function as a mixed use. It does allow for some residential, but not a big change there at Winterfield. And then we'll jump forward to 2021. Purple, we've now lost Commerce Center, and we're now calling it Gateway Business, which if you read the description, it's basically allowing for Commerce Center type zoning. The light yellow is the Village Residential, the gray is the industrial, which in this case, that's the luckstone area and colony construction, those type of places. And then the pinkish is the economic opportunity areas. Just do a side-by-side, you can see from 2019 to 2021, we've eliminated the yellow, which was again the Village Residential. We've receded that, removed Village Residential in these areas. And then here, again, low-density residential, again, this is built out, so a lot of this is built out, so just taking it off the map. And then we've converted a lot of this area here is now, the whole, I call a spine here, is all Commerce Center. And then we look at the Village, you can see the big thing here is the Village sort of lost its Village Residential area that goes, you know, to the east side here, that's probably the largest sort of retraction. And we just call it this Village now, this is Village Center, functions the same way. Here you can see Village Residential was removed at this area here. Same thing here, not a lot of change to the 711 area. Couple areas here were removed, Commerce Center, and it looks like it was made to be economic opportunity.
We also removed the RR, Royal Residential, the yellow. So that's...
Oh.
The yellow should, Royal Residential? Like the yellow housing to the left of that? That should have been like the three-to-five-acre designation.
Oh, yeah, okay, right here, right, right.
Because they went to the 10-acre minimum, they took all that away.
Okay.
So everything defaulted to royal preservation, which is what kicks you to the 10-acre lot size.
Got you.
But that's on all maps. If you look, that yellow changes and it all went to green. It was all yellow in 2010, then it was yellow and green in 2019, and then it's all green in 2021.
And what was the rural residential minimum lots size? Was it five acres?
Was it, I think, five. It was a five-acre average.
Five-acre average.
Two-acre minimum, five-acre average.
Okay.
I'm looking at you guys to the...
There's even four here.
And what year was that done away with?
2021. So 2019, it's still showing there.
Okay.
But go back to 2010, and you'll see it's all...
Yeah. Well, I didn't know that.
Yeah, right.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's been done away with, but it's, you can see the color changing on the maps.
It's over here too, obviously.
Yeah, go back to one of the other 2010 maps, you'll see it. So see the yellow and the all green? But that's 19 and 21, so if you go back to 2010 to 2019 comparison, there's, that's another 19, 21. All right, one more. Don't get lost. Sorry.
Got one more, yeah.
There you go. See the amount of greens, yellow?
Yeah.
And that's a yellow creamy pan, creamish.
White yellow.
Whatever.
Yeah.
White. But yeah.
Good catch. So summary, future land use plans, 2010, 2019, across three special area plans, 60 East Courthouse Village, Route 711. 2010 plans show the largest specialty footprints with extensive Village Center, Village Residential designations, supported by some Commerce Center and low-density residential in the Route 60 and Village Courthouse Special Area Plans. In 2019, the Village Center destinations were largely removed outside of the true courthouse core, with Commerce Center expanding along Route 60. Village Residential scaled back and economic opportunity introduced as a new category. 2021, Route 60 East Corridor shifted entirely to industrial, gateway business, economic opportunity, eliminating Village Center, Village Residential, and low-density residential in that area. The Courthouse Village footprint was reduced to a compact Village Core and an area of Village Residential removed. Gateway Business was introduced along Route 60. Route 711 has pretty much remained the same during these different iterations of the map. Any questions right now? So that's where we came from. So the, sorry, made this a little bit too, so the CWG future land use map, I'm sorry, it's a little bit too big there, but that says CW, future land use categories, a summary, they came up with the economic priority. So, you know, we've changed names over the years and got into different, you know, we've gone from Commerce Center to Gateway Business, so now economic priority is sort of the brainchild, the CWG, and that's the highest value economic development zones, intended for exclusive for employment uses such as light industrial, logistics, business technology operations. These areas are utilities served and strategically located along major corridors, primarily Route 60, and do not allow residential, ensuring long-term protection of scarce tax positive land. Economic opportunity, the economic opportunity are flexible, mixed economic zones that can include blended commercial, office, light industrial, or residential, again, mixed use where appropriate. EO differs from economic priority, it allows greater flexibility, including potential for mixed use and employment center residential, making this a good transitional district. And then we have industrial, traditional industrial, you know, we're thinking more heavier employment type, traditional manufacturing, and then the gateway business, we call that Commerce Center, that's your kind of your traditional retail service, you know, but we do have a, you know, things like through our pattern book, there are, this is on enhanced design, aesthetics, corridor character. So these are the gateways, what you're going to see as you're riding down 60. And these areas not intended for large industrial projects or high-intense mixed uses. So if you're really thinking the retail, the daily needs of someone or weekly needs, would be your gateway business. In the Village, that's the last land use designation that they worked with, the CWG, compact, walkable, mixed-use centers, small-scale commercial civic uses, we're thinking of a more of a Village form, Scottville, Aaron Hill, these are intended to service complete communities with sidewalks, interconnected streets, public space. And it's consistent with this longstanding Village model, where in the Village today, right here. So here is the map, you go from County Line to Maidens, just an overview of the map, I'm going to actually go by segment by segment. But here you can see the gold is the economic priority, and then that purple is going to be the gateway business. And here we have the Village, and then we have, of course, industrial. Here's just an overview again, here's our view of the economic priority parcels countywide. So here is that, the current bounds of that east, east area, the east growth district, roughly 2,800, I think it's 2,850 is what we said in the CWG report, a little over four square miles. This also coordinates with the, you know, with Utilities District in this area, utility service area. So I'll actually start in this area, here is that boundary, and just kind of working ourselves from, from east to west. We can see these parcels, economic, the CWG has come up with these as economic priority. And I wanted to show you the area also, you can actually see what is or what's not on the ground, and I think a lot of us probably already know, but you can see a lot of, you know, fair amount of this is already built out. You know, of course, not all of it is. You can see here, this is where the data center was approved. Along here, we have a, some gateway business, you know, we already have the service station, there's a couple of small businesses here on Page Road. Economic priority, here is a vacant parcel here, gateway business, got a, I could say Commerce Center Business Park, I don't know what it's called.
Light industrial.
Light industrial business park is existing. So a lot of these, kind of these designations are really just, just what's already functioning as. It's not necessarily intended to, you know, redevelop it, but just sort of say this is what it's functioning as. And you can see here, more gateway businesses, you get to the west, these are vacant here. Here's Greenberry Road, this is residential. And then you get over here to Oak Bridge, you can see more industrial economic prosperity. You see the parcels over here to the, on the other side as they align. So that's, that's that segment of the east, as we kind of keep working our way west. Any questions about this area or?
How current is this photo?
I think this is, this is on the GIS, so I think it's probably 23, 24, it's pretty current.
Okay, thanks.
One place I would talk about, because I don't think there's any secret, at least with this parcel here, 650 acres of discussions, this parcel does touch Mannikin Town Ferry. It also has access through the data center site, 650 acres, and I think this is something that's been discussed for light industrial, potential of similar technology type use to the joint property. So this is something that was looked at by the CWG but did not, was not included. You know, I think it's a conversation that, you know, we could have now, or, you know, after we finish the presentation. Now, I did just put this one on, now that this 232-acre parcel, you know, there's, I don't know of any kind of development, but just being that it's adjacent to this, I just think it's part of the conversation to have. So again, this parcel does have access and has expressed an interest in a light industrial future the owners have. So is there any thoughts on this or conversations I want to have or?
What's the subdivision to the northwest of that parcel, or northeast?
Right here?
Right, yeah.
Is that Eliot Trace?
I think that's...
Oh no, that's way off.
It's way, it's like right.
Way off though.
That's up, that old, what's that?
Well, I don't know if it's down south. I think it's access from 711.
But we can't see 711, you can't.
No.
You've got 100.
You cannot 100, that's what I'm trying to think of, you cannot 100. Because I can pull it up on chat.
Off of, you cannot spring through.
Spring Road.
Oh, okay.
You cannot springs, I knew it was that one.
Yeah.
As you could obviously tell that was a subdivision that cornered those two properties, so. As you could obviously tell that was a subdivision, that cornered those two properties, so.
All right, well, I'll just keep, I'll move along here, but any, any other thoughts on that, I mean, that, that's something I've, you know, that the, at some point when we sort of formulate our own ideas how this map might look like, that's definitely one that I think we'd probably, you know, to think about and give a recommendation, cause. So, if I keep moving west here, uh, again, here's Oak Bridge, we just left that behind, we have economic priority. Uh, economic priority, this is the site that was rezoned a little less than a year ago, uh, so th- these are zoned light industrial. Um, this particular site here, Roxanne, might you want to give a little more detail on, uh?
Uh, yes, so that was purchased probably back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen by a, um, development company. It wanted to go residential or mixed-use, um, that wasn't in the trajectory of the work. Um, but because it's adjacent to Oak Bridge, we looked at that as a larger parcel that would complement the Oak Bridge industrial, so.
Thank you, and then gateway business, this is a kind of a interesting area right here, if you kind of, uh, you know, here's Holly Hills. Gateway business, these are already some businesses along here, obviously, uh, so not really to be developed for any more businesses, but now here, um, interesting area where you probably have, uh, what I would call probably, uh, you know, it's not very dense, maybe, uh, you know, agriculture, residential, this is gateway business, but, you know, looking at it, just at the map, I do think, considering it's, it's, it's location to Holly Hills, this could be an area that could be potentially maybe economic opportunity, mixed-use. Obviously, the CWG saw it as gateway business, but just something to think about. And then here, Carter Galler, Carter Galler Road, uh, we have economic opportunity, if you go over here to like the, to the actual map, the colors. This is a, a truly what we consider a, a, a mixed-use area here, that was, uh, this would be economic opportunity. So that would, I think the thought here, you would have maybe some, some biz, some business use, and as you get further back to the east, uh, you would then maybe develop some housing in this line. This is the twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-one sort of growth area, special study, we'd actually move back a little bit. Uh, so this hundred and nine acres was identified as a economic opportunity, but the idea could be mixed, mixed use. Uh, I just sort of think across the street could potentially have some, could, the way the land lays, the way it's kind of a little bit, um, maybe underutilized, and again, all of this, you know, when you're looking at future land use maps, um, you know, we, we went back ten years ago, we saw all sort of growth areas and residential areas, but this is all still predicated on if landowners, you know, wanna sell, or are interested in developing, uh, so maybe, you know, s- maybe some logic is that's why you have multiple areas where this could potentially happen, but, uh.
Yeah, I mean, did they have the discussion about the, uh, these designated, is it already owned and, and nice houses on? Uh, it would take substantial amount of money to, to make that whole area what you're talking about, and then I, I've looked at all those parcels and none of them have any like big size, and access isn't, that's a dead break either. You know, through Page Road, a lot of them, so. I just wanted, did they discuss that, or did they talk about that?
No, if there was a, and I know Roxanne was in those conversations, but there, you know, that, there were a lot of very detailed discussions parcel by parcel. Um, but I think you're correct, uh, you know, some of these parcels would have to be assembled. What is the likelihood of even that hundred and nine acres, especially the front part where you have? Um, now, you know, you have multiple different owners, their houses, uh.
But on the cat, uh, car, yeah, Boulevard thing there, uh, the road that goes, you know, probably to the left between the, uh, Carter Galler and sixty, you know, there are, uh, a couple houses that people live in, and there are some structures on there that are not, but, uh, I'm just thinking that, uh, individual paid to put their road through there, I mean, state did not, county didn't either, they had some, some idea about what he, what he could do there in ownership, and I, and I see that some common owners of those parcels, you know, that could become what you're talking about, same time it's mixing that with, um, residential houses, some of them nice, I don't know. Uh, let me ask you another question, on Oak Bridge, uh, I'd pointed out, you know, the small parcels that it's designed as, uh, was that the person had to, was that part of the regrowing of the property, that we can only have parcels over two acres? Or, if anybody talked to the individual about, you know, doing away with the lots and making, you know, like twenty-five or fifty?
At, at Oak Bridge?
Uh, yeah, at Oak Bridge.
Um, the small lots in Oak Bridge?
Mm-hmm.
So any discussion, would, did the small lots come about that that's the only way to get it rezoned? Or he just designed it that way?
He designed it that way.
So he could sell more lots?
Yeah.
But I feel like there's a, a need to urge these developers to get bigger industrial lots.
Correct.
From bigger industrial.
Exactly.
For more, um, yeah.
More money, more jobs, there you go.
So somehow incorporate that one, some of the rezoning, they have a balance.
Right.
Large, small.
There it is, yeah.
Any discussion with the owner of the property then about what he thinks his future is, as far as, you know, businesses coming in?
No.
Can you say there are a lot, there are a lot of small industrial lots that may, that are just sitting? They need, you brought that up at the last meeting.
I've got it written down, book here, I mean, I count them up, quite a number, I would just think, uh, because they are, they're not waiting for rezoning, they're paying real estate taxes as a commercial lot, that's pretty high, and you'd think the guy would be moving up on something, so. I mean, I would, I don't know how to contact myself about it, I mean, you're not moving your property.
Which parcel are you referring to?
What's that?
Which parcels are they?
It's the parcels in Oak Bridge, no?
The, the ones on the east, yeah, can you?
Sorry.
Took our, our subject away. If we're talking about the parcels within Oak Bridge that are to the west of Oak Bridge.
Right here?
Yes. Yes, that is all owned by one owner, which would be the prior owner of Pytech, um, so that's. Yeah, they're, uh, yes.
I counted up, there were fourteen, and then they range, most of them are acre, there's some nine acres, some fourteen, one acre, but most of them were like eight and a quarter or something like that.
It's probably, it's sort of like what I've talked about with the ones that were for sale, I mean, it, it could just be an investment, and it just has no interest in selling it, so.
I mean, I, if that's the answer, okay.
Right. The idea might, it might be worth more than ten years it is now, so you're not hurting for it, so, uh, you know, it just, um.
They're waiting for the right development to come along, make it worth their while, essentially, um, is what I understand, so they were, they were currently, or they were previously bought to kind of insulate Pytech, is what they were bought for. Um, and as Pytech has changeover to invest in that, they still have the ownership of all those parcels around there. Um, but I don't think there's a push to move anything onto them very quickly. Um, and then there's some additional ones that are in the backside of Oak Bridge, kind of back where the ice den is, that belongs to the original, um, developer of Oak Bridge, which there's for sale, and they're just not moving. That might be a price problem, that might be a lot problem, that could be a multitude of things, but they're, some of them are on the market, and they just haven't moved very quickly. Occasional interest, but not deep interest in them, so.
Good questions. Um, so I'll just move along here, and you can see, uh, you know, again, the economic opportunity, Carter Galler. Here we're coming, uh, again, existing gateway business, existing gateway business, large, uh, mostly non-developed parcel here. Economic priority, we go the other side of State Mill, a large, uh, undeveloped, uh, gateway business.
Um, one question before you go any further. Back to where you were talking about the economic, uh, priority right there in Holly Hills. Was there any thought given to make that economic opportunity because of the transition to the small lots in Holly Hills? Would be, to me, a natural transition to go to small residential lots into commercial right there on sixty. That, instead of putting it on the other side of, of sixty, uh, why not have it going to Holly Hills, like you said, and having that natural transition, smaller lots, to whether it's townhomes, or this other smaller houses, and then commercial right there on sixty itself?
So you're talking about the econ, the economic priority comes down, that touches Oak Bridge?
No, to Holly Hills, to the left, right there with the gateway business.
Oh, that's what Wigan had said.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, why?
That, that was sort of.
I was asking why didn't I, the committee look into that, cause to me, that's a natural, instead of just picking an area that's got twenty houses on and say, oh, we're gonna make that economic opportunity there for the, uh, to put houses there, where you had a, to me, a better location.
Two vacant lots in there.
Yeah.
In the town, it's all messed up.
Oh, well, hell.
Uh, so, let me ask another question, on, uh, Oak Bridge. Uh, is this person aware of that, you know, some change, which he might give a designation, that he could do something other than what he thinks he presently can do with the lots in Oak Bridge?
Something light industrial with all the uses we have now?
I mean, just right now, it's comp, you know, it's, I think it's CC or some, it's some industrial, but, I mean, if you change the designation and it has a wider, uh, range of what you can do. I think, the landlord, I would talk to them first, what do you think about these ideas, is that something, thinking, have you moved your land? Uh, but, maybe, I don't know how long he would go to find out, hey, you know, my zoning's been changed, so I have another opportunity here.
Right, well, it's, 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 this is, I know it's a little, this is just a future land use map, so it doesn't change the zone, so his, you know, the zoning is gonna stay the same.
Yeah, I understand, but now you changed, you can do something to, to what you probably got.
Right, um, I think with the economic priority, it's, it, there are potential uses, so I think.
Right.
Landowner perspective, it's probably.
I think it might work in his favor.
Right.
So I think there'll be opportunities there for him.
To take, to take feedback on Mr. H, what Mr. Hatcher said, so do we know, does the county notify? I know, did you notify people, if something changes like that?
Well, I mean, these are all, as far as the comp plan, I mean, it's, these are all public meetings, we've put these all online, when, I, I think in Sauer's case, he knows what's going on.
Correct.
Uh, for sure, uh, so I don't think it's any secret to anyone.
Okay.
But no, we don't have to, you know.
Notify them.
No, I'm saying we're just.
I, I, I'd say.
Right, right, right.
I'll just.
Right, right, no, it's, it's a good conversation to have with, right, right. Um, but I, I do, uh, I, I'll get back to Mr. Hall's comment, I, I think that's kind of what I was, was hitting at, that, um, and, um, you know, maybe another, you know, I mean, economic opportunity is a little more expansive, it doesn't say you have to have housing, it says it's potential, so maybe that's just another option there, um.
And another one for me too, is right next to what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Along Stave Mill is economic priority, but you have the gateway business with Bojangles, Goodwill, like, all the stuff that's right there. So why wouldn't you, why would you want to take only commercial and industrial that far into the county, knowing that Stave Mill goes into a residential, past that red line, it turns into residential, basically? Like, why wouldn't you use economic opportunity as another bridge between all commercial up at sixty, larger residential outside of the growth area, and use the mixed-use as a way to bridge all of those?
Cause when that was originally brought up and rezoned, where Bojangles, Goodwill, there was talk about one time that was Home Depot gonna go in there, they actually took a building permit out, and then it got canceled, yes.
What, which parcel was that, right?
Right there behind the Goodwill.
So the Goodwill's that last kind of building that you see?
Well, I could see gateway business, then even on priority.
There was gonna be, the bottom part of it was gonna be like townhomes or.
So gateway business and economic priority pretty much are the same, am I incorrect with that?
In priority, you would only do light industrial, you're gonna focus on kind of larger-scale production of businesses. Um, and gateway business, you're gonna stick to your retail, your service industry, your traditional.
So you're not gonna want to go from retail to industrial to housing. You're gonna want to go from industrial to retail to housing, to larger lot housing.
Right now.
So that's putting all industrial right up against all the residential that follows Stave Mill.
You gotta be careful about how much you designate that can be residential, that if you want to try to get to that eighty-five, fifteen, you don't want to put too many opportunities in there.
Well, we don't want to put industrial right on the road there, cause that intersection is probably our highest intersection with cars. Um, we would want to make sure that we keep gateway business there, cause all of your retail's gonna want to see that traffic count and all of that. Um, and you want to kind of tuck your industrial away a little bit, um, give them close proximity to the transportation node, but not exactly on top of it. So, but, I mean, with that assemblage of those parcels, you could buffer it a decent amount for the residential on the backside. Is the thought process for those parcels.
And there, you know, with, with the gateway business, and even the priority, um, they're gonna either need customers, or they're gonna need workers. So there's an argument to say, and I think some, some folks have made this clear, uh, that, you know, the rooftops will, will need to follow, uh, if you're gonna have this, you know, industrial or, uh, commercial development, you'll have to have rooftops, uh, close by to patronize, or even to, in some cases, to, uh, to potentially work, so, just kind of keep, keep that in mind, but.
Looking at the citizens' work, makes you, they had unemployment rates, I think you should have found, Dan County, lowest unemployment in the state.
Right, right.
So, talking about no employees for the people.
Right, right, uh.
It just, uh, I don't know how people think economically, but most of the time, it's kind of a three-legged stool, have people, unemployed people, housing in the area, you know, and have businesses, we're lacking two of them. I'm just talking about the reality of it.
The other thing is, and I don't know how you would be able to gather this, how many employees do we have that work in our county, but can't live in our county?
We would need to capture that, I don't have that information.
Yeah, I know you won't, but I'm saying, I bet you that number would surprise you.
What, who's coming in, who does that, that don't live here?
Yes.
Actually, I think we.
Forty percent for schools.
We do actually have.
But that's just schools, that doesn't include county staff and.
I understand, I understand, I just.
Waitresses and.
Number I know is.
Public health and.
Actually, I think we, we did actually have that number of who commutes in, but doesn't, is an outlier of that. I think I have that number, I cannot remember if I may, I have to look it up, but I think we're somewhere in the four thousand range. We're to, leaving every day, lives here, but leaving every day, we're somewhere in the, I think, eleven thousand-ish range. So we're thinking one, capture that eleven thousand, so.
But we're exporting a lot of.
We're exporting.
Right, right, right.
We're also importing a lot too, if you have four thousand people that come in because they work here, but don't live here.
I see them coming home from the gym at seven o'clock in the morning on sixty, I said, where are all these people going, heading to Palatine, I'm just, where are they going? School teachers, maybe? In the marble place?
Going out, and four thousand coming in.
School system.
Let's say that's fifteen thousand workers there, that are not being employed by Palatine County businesses. So we do have a workforce that is available, we're just not tapping it, we're, are we gonna capture all of it? Um, but we have some available.
And, and that's typical for, for rural counties, I mean, that's, that's not, you know, it's, it's unusual by any means, but.
Well, I think commercial businesses are more concerned about the rooftops than industrial, cause commercial businesses are the ones where the people come to shop and eat.
People are gonna come, we'd love you to go to special shop here, period, they're gonna be around here, so.
Plus, that was my, with the urban property already being rezoned.
Industrial.
Economic priority down, coming down State Mill, Jessica, that, I mean, I would think you'd want housing at that bottom part, transition, there again, always looking at transitioning to what's across on State Mill that's already residential, and as you come down State Mill Road, further, everything's just residential houses on State Mill, and you got a couple subdivisions further in down State Mill also, to your left, and that you're like.
The one thing to remember is that, as we look down sixty, where we want to put commercial development, industrial development, the availability of larger lots over fifty acres is very minimal, so you start looking at all the assemblage of lots, and they're, they're okay, but.
But that's what I'm saying, you got the urban property, that's huge property.
Right, uh, fifty-five acres, yeah, um, so this one, the parcel that is.
That's, that's Balzer's property, we haven't hit Irvine yet.
Forty-two seventy-four is Balzer's property. Forty-two seventy-four is Balzer's property.
So.
Isn't Irvine Yardworks?
Yes.
So we haven't hit that yet, the one that's, the large one here that's rezoned is Balzer's.
Right.
Gateway or what was it?
Right here.
Palatine Gateway.
Palatine Gateway.
So if I understand, this, Mr. Hall, this area right here, you would see more of an economic opportunity, more of a mixed use?
Right.
Okay.
Like it originally was done up front years ago.
All right.
When our county attorney on the property did flip it.
I was on board supervising some dead property like that, and it was supposed to have residential in the back.
Yeah, exactly.
I look at the GIs parcel, you know, when it rode curves out, was it real, it's R2.
It splits up.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll show you that in a minute. So here is just sort of my, my sort of areas to think about, just sort of, again, here, this is where Mr. Hall was talking about, this, this area is maybe more of a mixed use skewed more toward residential.
I think it's got a lot again.
Now, this is, this is one, this right here is one, I put two pins on it, but eighty-six acres already zoned R2, a low, you know, a low density residential. Here, you know, I've kind of hearing, at least maybe not everyone, at least Mr. Hall, maybe this is a better fit for economic opportunity through here, and I just threw this one in because it is a large vacant property that adjoins all of these, and you can even see here through Holly Hills, it's even stubbed out right through there, so, I mean, as the map lies, to me, it just sort of seems a little more to flow like a mixed use residential buffer, so. Now, as far as this large one here, I just, again, it was a vacant parcel, so it can surely stay vacant, doesn't have to change, but I do think that, you know, you do border this economic opportunity, would seem like maybe, given this location, the buffering, maybe this could be, you know, an economic priority, borders economic priority, I think is what it is. Yeah. And again, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but just sort of, this is one that stood out to me as well. Just keep on moving, make a pretty good time. So, again, looking at the color, the colors over here, and then seeing our land use, we're, you know, here, we were just here, so now we're moving here, these are already built out, economic gateway business, priority here, this is the, this is the Irvine site, this is the EDA site, two, these are some houses obviously on Irvine, but if it was developed, those should probably be removed, and we have existing industrial gateway business area here that's not developed, along Cartagallier, gateway business not developed, a business.
Gosh, I mean, gateway business, does that allow some residential?
Yeah.
Commercial.
Commercial.
What's that?
Commercial.
Commercial. Right, okay. And this is where our friends in Battersham Road are, right here, right? Is that where that was?
Correct.
Right, okay. And then, you know, again, you have gateway business, gateway business on the rear to that Battersham property, gateway business, I think it's been that way for a while, you can see the maps here, the school here, institutional, economic priority, economic priority against this business park, what is this one called right there?
It's on.
That's, that's New Dorset.
New Dorset.
Oh, Dorset.
Commercial Center, okay. Okay, Commerce Center.
Like C and F, turn at C and F and go back there.
Yeah. So really, the, you know, your vacant parcels are economic priority, and then, you know, along sixty, we're, we're, we're looking at gateway business, and we do have some undeveloped properties. Again, a couple of these here are already developed, undeveloped industrial here, part of Luxton.
I think he may have missed some.
I got, I'm going to pick up some off Jude's Ferry, there's a couple that are coming.
Okay, gotcha.
Maybe you can see them. The, the only parcels in this one that I sort of, this is, this, here was this economic opportunity.
Priority.
So, I'm, I'm, a priority, is a priority, so right here, I just, again, just sort of looking at the map, there's a hundred thirty-five acres, these are, let's see, three, seven parcels, three, four, seven parcels, I think it's a private lane comes here.
Rose Lane, like something.
Is that what it's called? Just sort of, again, just struck me as maybe, you know, an area where there could be potential housing, maybe a transition for, so that's just one that kind of stood out to me on the map.
Yeah, he talked about it, and then, right next to New Dorset Road that developed that, that's a hundred acre track.
Where's that at?
Well, you got it going all the way out to sixty right there. In Colony Construction right up on the left, next to sixty.
That's right.
To the left, that's right below the J.
Yeah.
Over the left.
Low density.
Make your way to the left.
Over to the left, it says J's Ferry right.
Right.
Keep going to the left.
Right there is Colony Construction.
Yeah.
C and F and Colony Construction.
Where?
Though up.
Up a little bit now.
Right, that's it.
There you go.
So, I mean, I, I know one of those landowners, and he said it's to be selling, it's a few, not all of those, those parcels out to the right, got houses on, I don't know, what do you?
I think most of these are vacant.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's one of the larger opportunities along Route sixty that was, you know, no obstruction by existing housing and so on.
So the one at Jude's Ferry was for sale and sold, right at that stoplight, where Jude's Ferry, if you go straight down, that large piece that the one thirty-five is written in, which I know his one thirty-five is referencing, the pinpoints, that property recently went for sale and sold.
It did.
We have conversations with the current owner.
Yeah.
The new owner.
How recently though?
Two years ago?
A year ago.
A year ago?
Okay.
Yeah. Like time flies, I don't know. Last week.
And so here, here's the gateway business park, here are those parcels I just pinned, just to keep going, here we add an economic, the group added economic priority right across from the school on Jude's Ferry, you can see these parcels here as a priority, Battersham Road comes out here, you can see gateway business extends back into, as you can see the map here, and then another, I guess the front portion of Northwood Solar is economic priority, and then we come out a little bit out of the special study area, again, this is an extension of the study area here, this is an extension of the study, I mean, of the kind of growth district, growth areas, study area, and then the same thing here, we have economic priority just beyond, I don't think there was anything here that really stood out to me as, as far as near or nearby. Yeah, I, there's no water sewer out that far yet.
There's no water and sewer from you and Redling?
Yeah.
That was a big conversation.
The other thing is, is how are you doing, and I questioned this at the last meeting, how are you doing economic priority on the front of the larger parcel, like with the solar?
That is a conversation that we decided to put in there because that solar facility will at some point no longer be there, so is that an option at some point for someone to build out the front of it, to come through and do something once that's gone?
But that's not going to be there, but what's their lease? Most solar farms start at thirty years.
Thirty years.
Thirty years, and that just got built.
Right, so this is very far away thinking that if they were to pull out before thirty years or wait for the thirty years, that might be nice to have that designated, because that is such a large tract right next to gateway business.
Okay. But this changes every four years soon.
It does.
How many times is it going to change in the thirty years?
We're going to put it in here now and hope it stays.
But, so that's one, and that's, it goes back to, I think, what Hatcher has been mentioning before, like, that's one that's showing on here, but is not going to come to fruition anytime soon, so, like, it's there, but it's not going to help the tax base, it's not going to be able to go online, like Irvine, you know, can put a for sale sign up and go.
Yeah, I think that's part of the conversation we can have as we kind of drill through these is, you know, do we, are there parcels that we, we just feel like, you know, for whatever reason, are not in the, you know, you know, what's the horizon we're looking at here? I would say probably ten to fifteen years is probably, and we know that all these maps are subject to whoever happens to be sitting at the board, they could all be changed, you know, but, you know, even, even over the years, there's still been, still a little bit of assistancy, I think, in the maps, it's changed a little bit, but we still see the east area, the village area, seven eleven, they're still, they've gone up and down a little bit, changed, the land uses have changed, but the future land uses is, but.
I got a question for you later. So has the data center been figured into this eighty-five fifteen?
No, and I think that we figured that that would probably get us there itself, you know, if it came to fruition.
We wanted to figure it outside of that anomaly, so if we pull that out, what, what assemblage of parcels can we put through there that will make it to eighty-five fifteen outside of that, because there was an unknown at that time.
Well, you said this timeline he's talking about, I think that's going to happen before.
Right, right, it would definitely, it's going to happen, it's going to happen in that timeline, so it could just take care of itself, you know.
And even if it doesn't, as the folks have the opportunity for other, maybe have a high priority, particularly if they want to make the road improvements at them, that's just, that's a part of it.
So now we'll just go on through the, the village and finish this up and have a couple other slides once we get past the village, and we'll have done a good job today. So here's the village, this is about twelve hundred ninety acres, this is in the twenty twenty-one special area study, i.e. growth area, and this is about three hundred acres I measured here, this is, again, the current footprint based on the twenty twenty-one maps, and just to kind of move from east to west, here, added a economic priority in gateway business, Academy Road, of course, of course, these are residential, many of these, so don't know long-term, you know, how valuable this is with the residential, but obviously this is a, you know, parcel with a lot of open space for the economic opportunity, at least in the rear there, we, we move along sixty, and you can see gateway business are already, businesses here, several of these locations, so just sort of put a name on what's already there, again, shopping center here, gateway business here, on this gateway business quarter, I believe there's, before you get to Lake, there's more, more opportunities, more, more sort of land vacant, again, we should get in sort of the village. Now, what was added here, so I put this hatch line, this was added, turn forty-five acres was added as the village expansion, and as you remember, that one map that we showed actually had that low density coming all the way, wrapping all around, around here. Nothing radically different here except for you do have the village and, you know, and also some of the former maps, you remember, this whole area was, was, was filled in for the village area, now, this specifically was negotiated like this, so, and I think part of the, part of the idea was to, they thought that to leave the village, at least somewhat of a setback off of sixty here, maybe Roxanne can explain it better, but that was intentional, was to leave it off of sixty. Now, th- this is where I just sort of came in with a thinking about alternatives, do you add all of this into village, and again, you know, these are, these lots are of various sizes, you can see smaller ones, maybe acre or two, some maybe, maybe ten, you know, maybe this is somewhere where you might want to see cluster housing, which we haven't talked, we talked a little bit about, I mean, when we get, when we get into the housing portion, we'll talk a little more about that, but this is just an alternative view of maybe what that could look like, and kind of goes back to maybe some of the older land use maps, and incorporates everything along here into the, into the village. And we keep going west, again, village, here's park, library in the park, and then we have institutional as your navy, and then we just gateway business, gateway business, and there are some businesses here, but still fairly under, underutilized, gateway business here, again, we talk about the village, yeah, in Maiden's Road, a little gateway business on the west of Maiden's Road, and I did draw a little bit of an alternative, you know.
There's no economic opportunity in this village.
Uh, whether.
The old growth area.
Couple, couple, couple areas right here.
No, that's economic priority, economic opportunity.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That allows the mixed use.
I know, we should, we got to close it, yes, you're correct, so there is no priority, I mean, the village works as a kind of a mixed use, but.
The village works as a mixed use, but you have to really dig into that village vacant property because it's not going to work as a mixed use if it's already got the apartments, if it's got the Mennonite church, if it's got houses on it and all of that. I think a lot of that village along thirteen, at least the front parcels, there might be larger ones in the back, but there's a lot of development already there that's in use as a residence.
Right, and this is just what I was sort of looking at as potential additions, you know, maybe to, to the village con, the village designation. So that's the map, and I'll just do, I'm just, one other thing that we'll go over, if you had any questions about the village area, and again, we don't have to have, you know, keep working through this, but now that you're, I think, familiar with it, one, one of the, one of the items that was recommended was the Unified Development District, that was just a name that I sort of came up with, to kind of separate it from the village, so right now, the UDD is a vision as a single flexible master plan zoning district that replicates the current village area district, which is VRBC, VRBD, BCBD, which what I would call all master plan districts, where you kind of put together a plan, there are density sort of regulations and things you have to follow in each one, but essentially it's a master plan district, the idea would be to replace this with one, one zoning district that could be applied inside of growth areas, you know, it would support coordinated range of development, including light industrial, so you could do a light industrial development UDD, you could do it, you know, mixed use, you could do a village, you would just present a master plan for your development, so if somebody wants to come through and do a master plan on this parcel, you can use a UDD, if they're in a, if they're in a, you know, economic priority area, they can, they can master plan their, their, their light industrial park, it really is just a zoning district that could be applied and be a little more flexible and not as rigid, maybe you, you know, you would present it, you'd be approved as presented, showing setbacks, buffering, again, we're not writing ordinance now, but the concept is something that was endorsed by the, by the UDD, so it's something I want to just get into tonight's conversation. Now, alternative emphasis, one of the things I looked at is maybe adding another growth area so that north, just maybe separating out the village, to me, the village is Route sixty south, maybe we do a one that's north, just call it, I just thought of maybe the central, I should have put a, I should have put a, a comma there, maybe call that the central, so that have its own kind of special plan, again, just to reiterate, the PUD Plan Unit Development or Unified Development District, I think that's something we want to encourage in the growth areas, is sort of master planning, showing where you might connect, sort of putting everything up front that you want to develop, and again, just instead of multiple zoning districts, I think this is, would be encouraged in the PUD, the UDD tool gives some flexibility. You know, emphasize mixed use acreage, the CWG use EPEO define economic function, an alternative could be emphasizing expanding mixed use acreage within the areas, I think we kind of already have talked about that, at least in a couple spots, is the idea of more mixed use in those, those areas, those growth areas, those special plan areas. It's the idea of, of more mixed use in those, those areas, those growth areas, those special plan areas, something to consider. Any questions?
So, twenty nineteen, I can't think of all three of them, but that comprehensive plan had like Village Center and it had where Gateway, Palton Gateway was, and along that part of Route sixty. And so when they had the V I, the County Plan V I, they review it. They xed out all this. It wasn't possible, because the capacity was low. And so, reading the comprehensive plan, I guess a third of it is all about transportation that you have in your locality, what its capacity is, and then that kind of governs about what, what kind of development that's gonna be possible, because if we tell, if we say we're gonna build all this, V I's, then I could build roads and, and start overload what road you have, so. I know it's one of those three studies, it was one about the sixty quarter and keeping it as a thoroughfare. And so that's why this, I can't think of all three of the, I couldn't help it, Village Center and some, that they were done away with. And then they were blocked, they were done away with, that's why they didn't come out in the, in the comprehensive plan that was done in twenty twenty-one, and so what you're talking about is just void of any consideration whatsoever about what traffic is gonna be brought about by this capacity around sixty, as in what V I's gonna say, say about your plan in. And they might say, well, you know, by, you know, whatever their plans are, you know, as far as widening sixty or more road improvements. By that date, that's gonna be an element that's gotta be confronted about making us a reality.
Yeah, well, I, I don't think that the majority of the land we, we went over and we, we designate is probably gonna be you know, like it is today in ten years, the majority, probably, I mean, there'll be areas that, that develop, but that's to me, this is what, what we call a future land use plan. No, it's not a transportation plan, but, you know, we do know what, you know, as far as the county, we know the areas that we want to approve. Things like Port Dally Boulevard, extending that, we've got improvements at Jude's Ferry, we've got improvements down here at Old Buck, and those will continue to sort of trickle in, you know, as time comes, but, you know, I don't pretend that, you know, you have traffic is, is a big concern, but somebody wants to develop economic priority area, that's gonna be based on its own merits, we're gonna review it with V I, we're gonna see what transportation improvements they're, they're providing, you know, what are you putting in a turn lane, are you are you connected to the road over here, or you give another option, you know, so all those would be reviewed, you know, on a case by case basis, but traffic's always gonna be a concern and.
The only thing about it is one element of whether you're gonna be able to print, you know, this updated comprehensive plan, it has to go to V I, and, and they have to approve what you want to do, and they'll come back and with nonapproval for it. I mean, that's the reason it has to go to V I before it can be adopted by, by county.
They'll have a veto over it, but.
Well, they're just gonna tell you that.
Right. I mean, again, it's a future land use map, it's, it's possibility, but it's, it's not the, it's not a, it's not a proposal that they're.
I'm just saying as part of the code section about comprehensive planning amendments to it. If you call it, I think it's a difference to whether you make a small amendment, like sometimes people come in wanting, or whether, like we're doing right now, I guess it's considered a complete update, five year review, it's gotta go to V I before it can be totally adopted as, I guess it's gonna be two thousand twenty-six comprehensive plan.
Well, I, I think what I can do is.
I can't get on that, but I just go by past experience, maybe laws will change something.
Right, I mean, I, I will definitely look into it, but I, I think they review it, we do send it to them, but no, you know, as far as their.
I think one thing to look at is that majority of the stuff that we, speaking from my side of the house, majority of the stuff that we transitioned over to economic priority was already a gateway designated parcel, so they've already taken that into consideration at some point and had factored in, and usually most of the time industrial is gonna be a lower traffic count than a retail, like your fast food, your grocery stores, things of that nature, they're gonna have a higher traffic count per hour. So hopefully we're potentially reducing it a little bit, with, at least with economic priority, now you add in mixed use.
You'd go even lower.
Yeah.
Residential, the lowest of the low.
Residential.
This is a special paper, so.
Retail could be.
Yeah.
It would be no different than all retail. It would be no different than all retail, you'd be lower as a mixed use with adding the residential component to the commercial than having.
Oh, commercial.
One part with that is that we're adding in a mixed use that we didn't have before, so that might, that might alter it a little bit, but for the most part, we're taking gateway and transitioning, so, so it shouldn't really add that much to it by V I's perspective, but it could in some areas, well.
Well, I do know we get on the other side of the county, and I go through Menlothian, those roads really aren't much different than they are here, they have a lot more people, not that we want anything like that, but you know, again, this is future, this is thirty years. Putting it on a map saying this would be appropriate by no means being said we're gonna snap our fingers and, you know, we're gonna, these are, and we've seen in, in the past, I mean, look how much village residential was, was on maps that you know, we didn't, we didn't see these, these areas necessarily develop, some, some did, you know, we saw Oak Ridge, different things developed, but, you know, there really hasn't been a a large influx, but again, I think I'm talking too much right now, but.
Just comment, so basically we're changing acronyms.
And the end use, uses.
Well, they, yeah, the end uses are, right.
Yeah, we were going from retail to industrial.
And we do want to think about, you know, like Mr. Hall said, some of these areas we're talking about, maybe, maybe they would be better for mixed use, maybe they.
The biggest thing I see is that's a lot of business and not a lot of houses, we already have a housing problem and we're not fixing it.
Right. And in our next work session, we're gonna focus, it'll tie in to housing.
We gotta fix it so that it be more affordable homes and not these five to seven hundred thousand dollar homes they keep throwing up.
Right.
Which is a lot of these is what they're gonna be, so you're just adding a whole lot of it and not solving the problem.
And I also like to kind of mention, we're, we're really just planning for this six, seven square mile area. I mean, we're, you know, the rural areas, if they're rural.
Right.
And one of the convers, you know, one of the conversations that we had about, you know, well, how do we, you know, we're seeing a lot of subdivisions in the rural areas, you know, what are ways that we can get people to focus that into them with their utilities? I have ideas for that too, but again, we'll, we'll talk about that, the housing. But I think for this, maybe I'll write something up, kind of send something to y'all that y'all can think about, because there are some decision points that this group needs to sort of, sort of make. Not, not tonight, but maybe, maybe I'll type something up and say here.
Not tonight.
You're getting ready. Yeah, I'm getting ready to lose my power anyway, so it's.
So, any other questions so far? I guess we need to decide the next meeting.
And then workshop?
Yes.
Okay. The next meeting's December second.
We have a lot on the agenda, don't, do we have?
No, it's, it's a couple small hearings, we're doing motorsports and we have a single cuts. Do we, do we want to?
We probably won't want to add that now.
Maybe, you know, the maybe it's best to do comp plan during work sessions, I don't know, does everybody feel about that, it sort of seems to be a better.
I guess, I guess it's better.
I had heard that, thought that wasn't a bad idea, so. Would, we meet on the second. I mean, this, the December eighth through twelfth.
Until your Wednesday is best for me.
Is, is Wednesday, Wednesday.
Tuesday, Wednesdays, yeah.
Okay. Tenth or seventeenth, that'll.
The tenth, does that work?
Tenth, yeah. That would be.
Should be.
And is three o'clock a good time to, sure, okay.
I think we hold it to two hours instead, we got a lot accomplished in two hours.
I think we did good tonight, you know, and I'll, and I'll write this up and try to get some clarity, so y'all can say like, hey, look, this is sort of how we're thinking as a group.
What did you decide, tenth?
December tenth.
Tenth. At three o'clock, and how about this, for some reason, I'm gonna make sure this room is available, but with the seventeenth, maybe an alternative?
I gotta check and see on that Christmas party, yes.
Four. I did, I did a check too.
All right, well, let's just go with the tenth, if some reason this is, if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll talk.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concern, or chat?
I just said I won't be able to attend the December, but I don't see any taboos coming up, so I think, okay.
The December second meeting, December second.
Yeah.
All right, any?
That's all, that's all, thank you for, for listening.
Meeting adjourned.